Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our August 1st, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. If you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Covert's going to leave us in invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We lift the issues before you tonight, Lord, that you would give us wisdom to make the best decisions for the city. We ask that you be with the government, Lord, and with the city government, Lord, and be over all they're involved in. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Again, appreciate you guys being here this evening. I did want to, we do have a new member to our staff here. We have Aaron Hudman, and he's the Assistant Director and Planning Coordinator. So if you guys will welcome Aaron. And I know Clayton is deeply appreciative, so now he can be in his IT role on that. But welcome. We're glad to have you. Let's see. We can do a roll call.
Terry Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
Vee Dee Haney.
Here.
Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Aaron Panado.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
And any questions of last month's minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First item on the agenda, tabled items from the July 5th meeting. We have B-17-40 Raphael Hernandez, 3118 Mueller, variance for increase of height of wrought iron fence and fronts, presented by Raphael Hernandez. Okay?
Come back to that in a minute.
Yeah, we'll come back to it. Give them another opportunity. Next section is public hearing rezoning. The first item on the agenda is R-17-25 McGaw Properties LLC, 2376 Wagon Wheel Road, from A1 SF2 to C2, presented by Bates &amp; Associates.
I'll be okay, thank you.
We have Bates &amp; Associates here yet?
No, okay.
Okay, I'll come back to that one in just a minute here. Next item is R-17-26 Marjorie Brooks, southeast corner of Graham and Apple Blossom, rezoning from A1 to C2, presented by Marjorie Brooks.
Here.
Thank you. I'm Joe Brooks. This property, we're here, there's about 131 acres total between the three tracks. There's 10 acres that she donated to the church. There's the house on Apple Blossom that now ties into this, plus the original farm. And with this being just east of the new interchange and the 412 bypass proposed to come across, can you bring the slide up, please? To the left is the interchange, and can you bring the next slide, please? So if you look at the proposed traffic counts from 2016, it shows-
Can you raise that mic up just a little bit?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
The traffic counts, the proposed bypass coming into Tonnentown, 78,000 a day up north. Dixieland, if it comes through there, that proposed extension could be up to 28,000 cars a day. And then the 71 business is 31,000. So if all this happens, which we believe is going to happen with infrastructure funding over the next couple of years, this is going to be right in the heart of northwest Arkansas. So we would like to ask your approval to change this, so then we could work with the city to try to do a master plan to develop this in an orderly fashion.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Comprehensive land use plan indicates slow density residential for area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. Based on some of the information that Mr. Brooks just presented to us, we've looked at that in that area, and it is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations, and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
And I was going to have you do this for the other one, but if you wouldn't mind just reading as far as what is acceptable in a C2?
Okay, just give me a second. These are the permitted uses in a C2 zone. It is a general commercial district established to be a broad range of retail uses, which comprise the commercial function of the city, including groups of freestanding commercial structures. Permitted uses include citywide uses by right, cultural recreational and health facilities, offices, studios, and related services, eating places, neighborhood shopping goods, other shopping goods, trades and services, automotive services, parking lots, temporary buildings, transportation services, healthcare clinic, and indoor flea market. Conditional uses that are permissible by appeal to the Planning Commission include citywide uses by conditional use permit, utility facilities, recycling collection facilities, self-supporting tower and antenna, auction houses, temporary classrooms, automobile sales, church and synagogue, mobile vending site, and commercial assembly.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay. I'll open it up if there's any comments in the audience. If you would come to the mic and state your name and address.
My name is David Gilbert. I live at 5714 Walden Street, just to the right of the property that's highlighted there. And despite the fact that my mailing address is Lowell, I can promise you I do live within the city limits of Springdale. So that's been a question in this room at least once, and to everybody's humor, I think. We've been a couple of rounds on this property. I spoke against the proposed rezoning to warehouses. I spoke in favor of the proposed rezoning to allow a Catholic high school. I wanted to be on board with this one, but I can't quite get there, and I just wanted to share with you my reasons why. I will say, speaking for myself and my family, this is not the worst thing that could happen to us. So that's at least the good news. But I was looking at the allowable uses and the purpose for C2, and truthfully, I think C1 would be a better fit. The reasoning is this: yes, at some point, the Highway Department will build a 412 bypass, but we're told there will not be any frontage roads. Somebody might build them later, but that's not there today. At some point, the city of Lowell will extend Dixieland Road to the northeast corner of this property, and then Dixieland could be extended through the property. I think that's great, but it's not there today. What we do have today is a major collector by designation, but a 16-foot-wide street in real life called Apple Blossom Lane. And Graham Road, which is a minor collector by designation, and in places is 14 feet wide, in short, there's no place to put any traffic on this. This is not, this property is not at the intersection of any major roadways at this point. It's at the intersection of a major collector and a minor collector, both of which are structurally and geometrically deficient to handle the traffic. JB Hunt's brand-new parking lot sticks up that fan-shaped structure in the north. Lowell let them build that with no improvements to Apple Blossom. I am told that when one of the neighbors asked the city of Lowell why they didn't do any improvements to Apple Blossom, they were told, "Well, you know, that road has three different owners, and it's just hard to do anything to." I've lived in this neighborhood for 18 years, and that's what we always hear about Apple Blossom from Springdale, from Lowell, and from Bethel Heights. Well, we'd like to fix it. We'd like to make it better. We'd like to make it big enough to handle the traffic that's on it, but it's too difficult because we can't get the three cities to agree. So in the meantime, we're kind of stuck. Under the purpose of C2 zoning in the city's Code of Ordinances, it says, "It is the intent of these regulations that the C2 district be concentrated at the intersections of arterial streets." In other words, where two arterial streets come together. Right now, there are no arterial streets. There may be someday, but there are not today. It goes on to say, "Extension of the district along major arterial streets in linear fashion shall be discouraged." So even if Dixieland was there, that's one arterial street, and you're building along it in linear fashion, which the code says you should discourage. You can do almost anything in C1 that you can do in C2. You can't do Use 20 Shopping Goods, Unit 21 Trades and Services, Unit 22 Automotive Services, Temporary Buildings, Transportation Services, or Flea Markets. Under Conditional uses, and this is what got me out of my seat, I was going to sit this one out and just listen. Conditional uses permissible on appeal to the Planning Commission include Unit 31 Recycling Collection Facilities. This was an issue with the warehousing project, since the owner of the property was at that time actively involved in the recycling business. And now here, just a couple of years later, there's a proposal on the table where they could theoretically come back and get a conditional use and do a recycling collection facility on this property again. Were that to happen, knowing my neighbors as I do, not speaking for them, but just knowing them as I do, I think you would see a major uproar. This is not the appropriate use. No recycling collection facility needs to be on this piece of property. The church owns 10 acres, and I'm not sure if the church intends to actually build on that or not. They could build under C2 by a conditional use, but the appropriate zoning for the 10 acres of the church, if it is to be a church, is P1 Institutional. That way, they can build by right, not by conditional use. So I would propose the highest and best use of this land for today, not speaking for 20 years from now, but for today, would be a combination of P1 for the church and C1 for the balance of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
Can you turn the sound up? Turn the sound up? Can you turn the sound up on that mic?
Just really need that mic.
Yeah, I have to get really close to it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm Lynn Steele, and I live on Walden Street. Somebody may have already said this, but this letter is misleading. It states that there are new roads and new buildings in the area. There are no new roads and buildings going on in the area. The only road going on in the area is the bypass, and it's west of this property. And the bypass eventually is going to come east. The last map I saw, it's going to go right through the middle of this property. Why would you want to allow somebody to develop that into commercial and then have it be disrupted by a five-lane highway coming through it? And I was, he spoke about Apple Blossom. I was late getting here because traffic backed up on Apple Blossom this evening. I'd like for some members of this committee to come out early in the morning and look at Apple Blossom with the traffic on it, at the same time in the evening when JB Hunt, when they go to work in the morning, and when they leave in the evening. Something has to be done with Apple Blossom before anything else is done in this area. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission.
Patsy, do we know if there are any conversations going on on Apple Blossom as far as what we think that'll, what that entails in the future? Do we have any plans on paper the year we're up?
We have not, we do not have any proposals to do anything to Apple Blossom. We did look at amending the Master Street Plan to show the extension of Dixieland along the east side of this piece of property. The city of Lowell has applied for money through the regional transportation organization, and they've gotten through acquisition, utility relocation, and their next step is for construction, and they're moving forward with it. It just, it just takes time when you, when you fund those with, with money. So that, that's going to happen. But as of this time, we don't have anything programmed for Apple Blossom itself. And to answer the question about the existing roads not being able to handle that, our ordinance requires, as development occurs, they have to improve their side of the road to Master Street Plan standards. So as development occurs, those roads, which includes Graham Road and Apple Blossom, would have to be improved on our side of the street. And if the Master Street Plan is approved through council, then that road has to be built down that side, too. So as development occurs, we'll get those street improvements made. We just have those, those three, those two sections of Apple Blossom is all that we would see, the half being done. I can't answer why the city of Lowell didn't have JB Hunt improve any of it when they opened up the parking lot, but, but I know, I've been up there a few times. The traffic's terrible. It backs up everywhere twice a day, and it lasts for a significant amount of time, too. So. Okay, this is a call for the-
Any other questions or comments from the commission? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
And?
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
The rezoning passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, and it goes to council on the 22nd.
Thank you. Is Bates &amp; Associates here? Yes, okay.
Well, are they doing?
Is this for McGaw Properties that you guys?
Oh, you're doing McGaw's?
Yeah, I'm just whatever.
Oh, okay. Okay. I say, now, wait a minute, Greg. Your name's not on this one that says McGaw Properties.
I'm coming back to R-17-25 McGaw Properties LLC, 2376 Wagon Wheel Road, from A1 SF2 to C2, presented by Bates &amp; Associates.
Hello, my name is, my name is Tina Ford. I'm a project manager with Bates &amp; Associates. We're presenting this for rezon from SF2 to C2. Sorry, yes, SF2 and A1 to C2. This property is, it is along Wagon Wheel Road, which is a, yes, which is a five-lane principal arterial. Although there are SF surrounding, SF2 zone properties surrounding this property, we feel that with a principal arterial, that C2 would be appropriate along Wagon Wheel Road. Towards Interstate 49, there is neighborhood commercial within the comprehensive land use planning. It's outside of that area to the west. And also to the east, there is commercial on Wagon Wheel. With a five-lane exposure, commercial will be ideal for Wagon Wheel.
Okay. Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan, is not recommended for approval. Now, you have to keep in mind, the RV park that's, or the RV sales that's there is a non-conforming use. It was in existence when the property was annexed into the city. It could continue as long as it stays. If it shuts down for more than six months, it can't be opened back up as a commercial piece of property. So that, that, that's a little bit different situation. The rest of the commercial concentrations are closer to 49 on the west end and closer to 71 on the east end. The property just to the, there's part of this property along Wagon Wheel that's not in the city limits, and if you go out there in the big area that's, they've been moving dirt off, it seems like forever, is not in the city of Springdale. It's in Bethel Heights. So we don't, we didn't, we didn't have any control over that piece of property.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience?
David Gilbert, 5714 Walden Street. We do live fairly close to this as well. I'm confused. You just approved a zoning to C2 with staff recommendation on a property that has no major roadway, where every roadway to the site is deficient, and the property doesn't border those roadways all the way to a roadway that is sufficient, therefore, there will never be adequate roadway to that property. This property is already being commercially used. It's on a five-lane road in a commercial area that is, I mean, look at the picture. It's becoming more and more commercial all the time. Why would the Brooks property be recommended for approval to C2, and this property be not recommended for approval to C2?
Let me answer that?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is an area where the type of development has been set around that, with commercial development being retained at those locations, as I indicated. This is a residential area. Our land use plan shows it as a residential area. We don't show any new roads cutting through there. The Brooks property has the 412 bypass going through it. It's a totally different situation than what this area is. This is a pretty well-established residential area. That's the difference, from my standpoint, between the two pieces of property.
Well, I live in a residential area that's immediately adjacent to the Brooks property that's been there since 1985. My house was built before almost any house you see in this picture.
Well-
The Brooks property is also shown on the master land use plan as being low-density residential. These properties are not more than a quarter of a mile apart from each other.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with you. I'm just stating what my position was and what, that's what my recommendation is. Okay, I'm not going to argue with you about it, but I'm just stating what my, as the planning director's recommendation, and what it's based on.
And that's fine. And you know that I've known you for a long time, and I have the utmost respect for you, but I do not understand-
We don't, we don't always disagree. I mean, don't always-
We do not always agree. That is correct.
Yeah, that's correct. We don't always agree.
But hopefully, we're still friends when we're done.
Oh, we're still friends. I don't take this stuff personally.
I just, I don't, I don't understand. I don't, to me, this property should be C2, especially if the other is C2. So, you know, I mean, if you're-
It's not C2, though.
It is, it will be as soon as-
This property that's adjacent to it is not C2.
The property, the Brooks property will be C2.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And it's in the same location, in the same neighborhood, a quarter of a mile away. The difference is, this one's on a five-lane road that's already there, and it's already being used for commercial purposes. The other property that you just voted to approve has been 100 acres of pasture for as long as anybody can remember. I don't understand why this project, I don't understand the process. I don't understand how a piece of property in this location would not have staff recommendation when the other property did. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm Randy Kimbrough. I live at 4660 Wagon Wheel Road, right adjacent to this property on the north. I'd like a show of hands from the people in our neighborhood that are here, that are objecting to this proposal. Great, thank you. You know, this, this lot is bounded on three sides and across the street by residential property. Catty Corner is Stonecrest subdivision. Eagle Crest subdivision is across Silent Grove from Stonecrest. The Razorback Greenway is nearby and parallel to Silent Grove. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of pedestrian and bicycle traffic that goes through this area. If we, looking at this electrical supply warehouse, present location on 412, it looks more industrial than it looks commercial to me. There are loading docks for 18-wheelers on the front of the building. The presence of 18-wheelers loading and unloading will be noisy. Increase in traffic created by the 18-wheelers and the smaller box trucks and cars for the retail business will add to congestion on this five-lane road that runs through the heart of the neighborhood. The present electrical supply house, supply shop warehouse facility on 412, if it's, if it's something that's going to be constructed, it looks like that, it has no place in the neighborhood setting, as far as I'm concerned. I object to the shop warehouse in particular, and any commercial zoning on this property in, in, in general. The comprehensive, the comprehensive land use plan in this area says that it's to remain medium-density residential. The RV dealership is non-conforming and shouldn't be used as an example for future development here. This actually does seem like an effort to bust up a residential area and force commercial development on a section between Silent Grove and Bethel Heights to the east that is clearly residential, and we want to remain that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the audience?
I'm on Stonecrest Neighborhood there. I would like to, just like the gentleman said here, I would like you to look at the picture as well. And there is a big corner there where Stonecrest is, which is residential. You talk about the five-lane road personally. I didn't have much of a choice in that. If I'd have been involved in the neighborhood, I'm not all for the busy highway there itself, but I sure as heck don't want any more trucks or anything else on there. The gentleman before me brought up a good point, the bicycles and stuff on the road there. It's not safe for them to have big trucks going back and forth through there. I mean, the stuff at the end of the road that's closest to I-49 right now, I mean, they don't generally transfer down that road all the way down. There's nothing down there for them to get to, except if they're cutting through to get to 71. I'm totally against this. I think it messes with the buffer thing. It's a residential neighborhood.
Thank you, Lonny.
My name is Paula White, and I live at 4441 S6 Cove in Springdale. I live also in a subdivision very close to this property that is being introduced here this evening, and I've been a property owner for 20 years. I live in a quiet, wonderful subdivision where the five-lane road has really caused a lot of commotion. I vote against this proposal this evening and would respectfully ask the same of you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 5140 Callahan Mountain Road in Springdale. We're just north up the hill of this property and Dr. Kimbrough's property. And just would like to reinforce a couple of things that both Patsy Christie said about this being, the McGaw's RV being grandfathered in. It was there before we built our house some 33 years ago. And the fact that they're trying to drop a C2 in the, in the middle of a residential or agricultural area with no buffering, the idea behind the whole Planning Commission purpose, as I understand it, is to provide gradual changes from residential areas through residential commercial and C1 and C2, so that you don't have one right up against the other. And so it, it, it goes against everything that, that we've heard from the Planning Commission and that whole, the whole idea behind planning. So I'm glad to hear that, that you have a do-not-approve recommendation, and I hope that that's the way the Planning Commission votes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also live in the Stonecrest subdivision, and I think, we've all raised our hands. We disagree with this, and we're glad that you-
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. Ingrid Ram, 4292 Stonecrest.
Thank you.
And I think, just to keep everything east of Silent Grove, it's residential, it's been that way, and there's plenty of commercial land that is to the west side of that, that I think there's opportunities closer to 540 that would even make more sense. I just don't think it's worth bringing in a commercial property right there in the middle of everybody's land where it is very residential. I disagree with this, and I hope that y'all honor the community's wishes.
Thank you.
I'm Wayne Van Hook, and I'm at 3654 Thornberry in Springdale, which is close by. But I have to agree with Mr. Gilbert. Y'all just reason, I happen to own some property on Walden, too. You just owned a piece of property that butts up to my joining property line. Y'all said nothing about a buffer, and this is a whole street of houses, and y'all just now voted. I cannot see this. I cannot see this. Anyone sitting at this table, I've been in the real estate business here 48 years, anybody sitting at this table that don't- sitting at this table that don't think that that's not gonna, Wagon Wheel from 71B to the interstate is not gonna be commercial in time, I don't think you're looking at it because it is more and more becoming commercial. And I don't, the way you voted a while ago and the way you, your recommendation on this seems so twisted. And the, I don't, I don't think anyone who's in the business thinks that that will not be commercial all, all the way through because it, it is. I've just sold a corner of 48th, I mean, of 40th, and Wagon Wheel, and of course, it'll go commercial. The other corner's already gone commercial. They just tore a house down on the north side, Lindsay did, and I, I cannot see that, that, that major road won't be, won't have commercial up and down. That's just my opinion, but, but I, I can't understand, you do the back of this fellow's house, the back of a house that I own, the, I mean, we got a barbed wire fence is all it's, that's the buffer you, you give us tonight. So, consider that, and I think this ought to, I think this ought to be commercial.
Thank you.
My name is Erica Willis, and I live at 4662 Stonecrest Circle in Springdale there. I am the president of the Stonecrest PTA, PTA, P.O.A. That was another lifetime ago, too. I actually built the house in '03, so I was with Patsy Christie and the first group that all talked about the Wagon Wheel situation and was on a lot of people's hit list, I think, during that year. But as a house that actually backs up to Wagon Wheel, it is, it is, there's a noise level. There's always been a noise level, and we kind of knew that as it was developing. The challenge that we have, though, is I remember in those years when we first discussed as homeowners, what was the look going to be? And as J.B. Hunt School was developing and is one of the leader, one of the leading schools elementary-wise, especially out in that area for Springdale, you had a lot of homes, a lot of families coming to live out there, and the subdivisions were building, and it was attracting people to that school. My fear is, is that as we talked about it, we were trying to keep the commercial at bay with McGaw being grandfathered in, and anything to the west of that, we were trying to hold off at Dunk, you know? And it's gradually encroached and encroached, and it, and it goes now to Silent Grove. After McGaw, there was going to be a break until, and I can't even remember the road now, I've gone blank. And, and so, my concern is, is that this area is the last of the subdivisions, and Stonecrest on our one side of Stonecrest actually does back up to a field to where you would have commercial come right on the backside of properties that are in the $300,000 range. And so, my request for the committee was, is initially, we lost on the five lanes with the median in the middle because of so many of the owners that were agricultural who requested that they needed to move their cattle and their hay, and they had family land, and that was the reason why we couldn't have a median because this land was supposed to stay undeveloped and, and agricultural, and now we're totally switching gears, and that land in between there is going to try to go commercial. And so, I know as a subdivision, I represent the homes that we have, 42 occupied homes in our subdivision right now, and all owners are definitely on board with the idea that they do not want this to go commercial and would hope that you would consider our, our feelings in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have one more that we received yesterday. Mr. Taylor brought this by. He wasn't able to be at the meeting. He says, "We are in close proximity to the property that is interested in rezoning to commercial. At this time, we would be against such a decision," and it's signed by Mr. and Mrs. Taylor.
All right, it's to the commission. I'll make one comment, because I think many of you guys know I live up in this area as well. I do want to reference back as far as, you know, back when Wagon Wheel was being made into five-lane, I was one of those that was very much in favor of having medians in certain portions of Wagon Wheel. This is an example of why medians would have made sense because if there was a median down through here as far as for residential area, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation as much as we're having tonight in this whole piece. But that's just my perspective of that, and this is a residential on both sides, and there is established residential on both sides with the exception, obviously, of McGaw RV, which we've clearly stated is a non-conforming use just because of how that was annexed into the city. So, I'm calling that out as well as far as my, my personal views of that and, but also the difference as far as where I see this one versus the, the other one that we were, that we voted on previously as well. And, you know, the other property, there's been years and years of opportunity for that to develop, but because of the, the bypass plan to go through that, which is seemingly getting additional awareness and potential in, in that whole piece, that's, that's simply why I voted the way I did. Not expecting any, all the planning commissioners to explain themselves, but I know that there's plenty of residents up in the area, and I felt compelled to be able to explain as far as my position in that whole piece. And again, this is one of those, we can agree to disagree in this whole piece on it, so. Any other comments or questions?
Call for the vote. Okay, call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
You ready?
Yeah.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Heeler?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes. Uh, hold on.
You're, you're voting to rezone it from A1 and SF2 to C2? That was a yes vote?
No, no, I meant to say no.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Change mine, mine is no.
The call for the vote is to rezone as requested from A1 and SF2 to C2. And it's a call for vote, that's the request, yes or no? Okay.
I'm voting to leave it as SF2.
So, yes.
Okay.
I am as well.
Okay, so those, let's just start again and call the roll again, okay?
Covert?
No.
Haney?
No.
Heeler?
No.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Panado?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
No.
My apologies, Chairman. I thought we were asking if we were voting against it, and that's why I answered the way I did.
Right, and that's why we put it on the agenda that it is a call for the vote of the request as presented. You have the right to appeal to the city council. The appeal has to be filed with the city clerk within 15 days, and you have to indicate why you think the planning commission's decision was an error.
All right, I will.
And then we'll get it on the agenda.
I'll be appealing.
Well, you're not the property owner. The property owner has to do the.
Well, I will appeal, though.
Okay.
Thank you. And when is the, the city council?
Well, the, the next city council meeting is next Tuesday, but you have to have your notifications and your appeal in, so we're probably looking at the meeting on the 22nd, more than likely.
Okay, so the.
All the adjacent property owners get notified again, if it is appealed, by the same method that you got notified this time. Okay?
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, R-17-27, IFC, Greg Edwards, 2200 South Old Missouri Road from I-1 to C-2, presented by Greg Edwards.
Oh, no, thank you. I'm Greg Edwards. I brought, I brought some paperwork. I was supposed to get some, a study done by an architect to give me the density of, for the fire department. They asked me to do this to make sure that this would pass. The whole building would pass as a density requirement, and I've got that paperwork here. I was going to pass that out to all y'all. That way, you can at least see what we did.
Okay. That, that really is the conditional use.
Okay.
That's for the conditional use, not the rezoning because first we got to get rezoned to C2 before we can talk about the church.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and pass them out, and we'll talk about that when we get to it.
Okay. Dwayne really needs one, too. Can you, have you got one for him?
I got one.
Okay, this is a request to rezone the property from I-1 to C2.
Okay.
Do you want, anything you want to say about that?
I just need to get it rezoned so I could put a church in there. That's about all, at least to the church currently at another vocation. They've outgrown it and need a little more room. They're not, they're just, I mean, they pay the rent on time, they're, they cause no trouble. They're in actually Space Center North right now, just down the street, actually behind where Graybar is. They're right behind Graybar Electric's building now, so, and I'm just moving on from there to 2200 is all I'm trying to do.
Okay.
Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan does indicate regional commercial use for this area. However, this area is not considered to be a commercial area. It is more of an industrial-type development, and due to the nature of those surrounding industrial uses and structures, the rezoning request is not, is not recommended for approval. Have you looked at what you could park? I mean, once we rezone it to a C2 zone, anything that I read in that list a while ago can go in there, and I don't think you have enough adequate parking for a commercial-type activity because it was designed and built for industrial use.
That building has no industrial people in it whatsoever. Neither one of those buildings I would classify as industrial use at this time.
Okay, but that doesn't mean that tomorrow or next week, you could bring in an industrial use and use it as a warehouse. Once you rezone it to a C2 zone, you change the whole look of that area. I'm concerned that it doesn't have adequate parting for what could, what is, is the possibilities for commercial use. We're not rezoning it just for a church, and I'm not sure that that is a, is an appropriate way to rezone property just because you want to park a church. And I know the reason you want to do all this. I hope, wish we could find another location. I'm just not sure that this is the right place to rezone to put a church in it. My recommendation is not to approve the rezoning.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? To the commission?
How many parking stalls are on the building now?
Do what, sir?
How many parking stalls are there today?
Oh, there is enough parking. I could, I, I don't know exactly how many, but there's no one on the, I guess it'd be the south side of that building. Aramark and one other tenant is the only people there over there. Aramark probably has five trucks, maybe seven, and then they have about five or six employees that drive those. There's not 25 cars in that whole parking lot between them two buildings in any one day.
How many square feet?
Maybe 30.
How many square feet is the building?
58,600 and something.
And how much does the church want?
5,000 square feet.
Okay.
Right up in the, in the, it'd be 5,000 square feet in the north, no, it'd be in the southwest corner, southeast corner of the building. There's a 5,000-square-foot area there that, that we have, we have leased it to a church before, which was a bad idea, but I'm not going to get into that. You all know that.
Yeah, I think when we've had things where it's close to industrial and you've got truck, truck movement going on, and then you try to put something that would fit in a C2 where you have more pedestrian-type customers coming in, it's not the best fit, and it becomes.
That's what I was saying, though. I understand what.
It becomes a danger to the.
There's not any industrial, the only truck traffic that comes through there, there might be, maybe, other than those five or six, and they're not big semi-trucks, they're just bob trucks that they deliver those uniforms in, other than what we let Clark come through there, or Nilfisk use our parking lot to keep from having, getting out on the highway, other than what they move through there, there's not five trucks come a month in any of those buildings. Maybe over there at Nilfisk in the far one, there might be more than that, but there's not very many trucks come in any of those buildings anymore, other than what Clark is moving or Nilfisk is moving from that Long Metal Building there through our parking lot. And we just allow them to go through there to keep them getting out on the highway. They just ask us.
Did you just say that you had a church in there, and that was a bad idea when you did it?
Yeah, it was because it was a, you all have been through all that, and I probably shouldn't even say it, but it was the Marshalese people that were in 2100 South Turner that we had so much trouble with at one time, and I leased that to them at one time, and then they moved. But these people, this guy's been leasing from us, this church, for probably five years. Pays his rent in advance every month. We never hear any trouble out of him. We've not had one call for complaints. I mean, he's just a real nice guy, and that's the reason that I'm trying to do what I'm doing. We haven't had a lick of trouble out of the guy.
You know, and I guess for me is looking at the big picture of, once it's C2, it's C2 for any C2.
Well, and I don't think that will hurt me at all because the businesses that are in there right now, as far as I can see, I don't see a one of them in the two buildings that it, those two first buildings for sure that would, would not go in a C2, any one that I have rented. There's not any manufacturing that goes on in the building at all. It's, it's more or less just, well, there's a, the uniform people are in there, Relise is in there. My office is in that building.
We have the ability to spot zone in a situation like this to where you can say, all right, if we decided to do it, I'm not saying we would, that only 5,000 square foot of this building would be allowed to be C2, and everything else would have to stay its regular.
Well, he has to create a legal description for that, which would have to happen. But you couldn't just do the building itself because it would have to have parking.
Oh, yeah.
So, we would have to rezone an area big enough that would let it meet the rezoning requirements for a C2 zone, and, and remember, when you put yourself in a box and say it's just going to be this church, that's all you're going to use it for.
Right.
You know, that's where we get into issues. You know, we rezone to this, and somebody wants to rent a third of it or a portion of it for a restaurant, again, we don't have enough parking for that kind of stuff. Those are the situations we've gotten into in buildings that are not designed for residential use. And then you got the fire issue and the building code issue when you start putting assembly, and I know they're addressing that, at least for the church, as far as that's concerned.
Thank you.
I wouldn't have a problem writing a legal description to include parking and the 5,000-square-foot area. I'd do that anyway for lease line descriptions for my tenants, so I don't have a problem getting that done.
So, my, my problem is what I see coming back is that we rezone it C2, and then, then something comes in that needs more parking, maybe it doesn't even belong to you anymore, but now it's C2, and they come back and, well, we bought it this way, you got to help us. What are we going to do? And so, then it comes back to, it always comes back to our table, and then we're trying to clean up a mess that maybe should have never happened.
Well, I kind of see your point, but then again, you can't plan for everything either. I mean, things change. I mean, everything changes daily. I mean, things don't stay the same over multiple years. I mean, things are going to change. That's going to happen regardless, I think, so.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I, I think Ms. Haney's point is that if we clearly are looking at an industrial area, which I think we'd all agree we are, that we'd be clearly making an intentional decision to go outside of what that area was designed to be by putting that type of use in there. That would be the concern.
The only one it would hurt is me, though. That's what I don't understand. If it happens, I mean, if it causes a problem, it's not going to cause anyone a problem but me because I'm the one that's going to have to deal with it because it's right there on my property, and that's what I can't.
The difference that we have here on this one is, is that you, you have already described to us as far as, and you have on the agenda as far as a conditional use in this whole piece, and your whole premise as far as wanting to rezone this to a C2 is for the use of this church in this whole piece on it.
Well, yeah, I guess you're correct there. I can't deny that.
Now, if it's described more as far as making this as a property more attractive as far as for it to be sold and, and, and other uses in that regard, however, you do have industrial that is around you in that whole piece. We can sit here and agree or disagree on that whole piece, but that's what's in front of us as far as this particular one on here. You've made a, a direct connection as far as this to the church as far as that conditional use, and that's.
I'm not going to lie, that's what I'm going to put in there.
I understand.
That's, I mean, that's why I said that because that's why I, I didn't know any other way to put it. I mean, that's what I'm doing. I'm trying to put a church in there. So, I mean, I don't know what else to say. If there's any way I can get it approved, I want to. I mean, I need to get it approved so I can move the guy, or he's going to move elsewhere. That's all, I mean.
Is he already at capacity now at his current location, and has there been complaints as far as where he's at with how things have been parking or any of that?
He doesn't have, he's in a location that is identical to this almost, right behind Graybar Electric. There are one, two, three, four tilt-up concrete building, five, and FedEx is right across the street. And he is in a building right behind Graybar.
So, why move?
Do what, sir?
So, why move?
Because I need him to move for one reason. I mean.
Okay.
I need him to move. That's about all I can say.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Haney?
No.
Huler?
No.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Panado?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
Uh, this does not pass 7-1.
Okay, you have the right to appeal. Again, you have to appeal within 15 days to the city clerk's office. You have to notify all the adjacent property owners again, to state in your appeal why you think the planning commission's decision is an error.
So this will, I guess we're taking the conditional off?
Right. It's not zoned for it, so the conditional use can't be heard.
So seventeen dash oh-six will not be heard this evening as far as for conditional use. Other item in conditional use, seventeen dash zero-five Hillwood Properties, east side of Robbins Road, north of Fairlane, waiver seventeen, this is actually, should be seventeen dash thirteen, not twenty-four, of subdivision requirements presented by David Platts or , or in Paris.
I'm Warren. Do you have that in front of you? Yeah. I think the main reason there was a lot, yep, there's a lot behind another lot, and there's a 50-foot easement to get to it, so.
Okay, is this, is this the right one?
Questions on it? Yep, that's the right one.
Okay. And this is a conditional use for a tandem lot, which we would hear the, the tandem lot, technical plat review comments, all comments from utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of the construction plans.
Okay. Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
Mr. Pierce? When, when did you come into possession of this property?
Uh, I think it was oh-four, 2004.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I think I was supposed to bring these two, had all the neighbors get-
As long as you have the cards, it doesn't matter whether everybody signs it or not. Good, thank you.
Let's see, we would take the call for the vote first and then waiver second, or reverse? Call for the vote.
We got to approve the conditional use for the tandem lot before you can do the other part.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Huler? This is a waiver of-
No, this is the conditional use to allow it to be, to be split as a tandem lot. Right. Tandem lot being one behind the other, and it requires a, a conditional use for that. Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Conditional use passes 7-1.
Okay, staff will repair the resolution for that, and it goes to council on the 22nd. Okay. Then we have the lot split itself, and then we have the waiver of subdivision regulations.
Okay, so lot split seventeen dash twenty-four, Hillwood Properties LLC, and this will be a motion.
And the only staff comment is that all comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney on the lot split. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Huler?
Yes.
Lot split passes 7-1.
It's still subject to the council approving the conditional use. You can't file a lot split until the conditional use is approved by the council, and then we can move forward with that.
Okay, I was told that was on the eighth. Is that not right? That the-
It normally goes to the second council meeting in, in the month, which is the 22nd.
Okay. All right.
And we still have the waiver.
And the waiver of subdivision requirements is you're asking not to do street improvements. The property has how many, been split how many times?
I'm sorry.
How many times has this property been split?
I'm, I'm not sure. It was a sixty, it was a 66-acre piece originally, and honestly, I, I think what we're doing is, it was, it came, we bought it in several pieces, like three or four pieces, I think it was. Memory doesn't serve there. And then I know we've split the one seven-acre piece off that you can see, the corner up there, and then the, the neighbor is buying the 15 acres, you know, that's, that's there. I, I, I don't know, I'm sorry, Patsy, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, well, you're asking for a waiver of subdivision regulation, which means it's not filed as a standard subdivision. You don't have to do street improvements. That's what a waiver would. And only the council can actually grant the waiver. Planning commission makes a recommendation to council whether or not you want to recommend a waiver of, of subdivision regulations and street improvements.
Do you have a motion?
A motion, whether you want to recommend it for approval or not.
Motion that we move with the council with staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Covert.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Haney.
Parsley?
No.
Panado?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
Haney?
No.
Huler?
No.
Parker?
No.
Waiver of subdivision requirements does not pass eight-zero.
Okay, the staff, the recommendation to the council will be, it's planning commission recommends that the waiver not be approved, and that will go with the lot split and the tandem, tandem lot split on the 22nd. And what that means is you would have to do street improvements. You'll have the street, the full width of the property to city, to master street plan standards.
To, to what? I'm sorry, I don't understand. A street to what?
To master street plan standards, if it's shown, whatever it's shown on the master street plan is the, what kind of street improvements you'd have to, to do with that. You want to come by the office, we can look at it and see what it's going to be.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. There's no street, I mean, there is a street there at the, uh-
Right.
The Benton County, and I think Springdale and Benton County just worked together on making a nice wide river.
The improvements would be curbing gutter, sidewalks, all of that are master street plan standards, and you're subdividing the property, and you're asking to waive that requirement. That's what the council has to agree to allow you to do that, which means if you don't do it when you split the property, then the taxpayers of the city have to pick up the cost of doing those improvements sometimes in the future. And only the council can make that decision.
Okay.
As it's commitment of, of tax dollars.
Okay.
All right.
All right, is that it?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. All right, uh, so we did the first lot split. The second one, lot split seventeen dash twenty-six for Charles Thomas, and the waiver seventeen dash eleven that's been tabled per applicant. Next section, large-scale developments. L-17 dash twenty-two Walnut Grove Storage, 3924 South Missouri Roads, concept of detention. Also have a variance seventeen dash forty-four for modification of commercial design standards presented by James Koch.
Good evening. Commissioners, my name's James Koch. I'm the engineer and project representative for the proposed improvements to the existing Walnut Grove Storage Facility. Just a little bit of history on the project. This was originally approved as a large-scale development in 2006. The, uh, the owner developer at that time built the existing buildings that you see marked on that plan. The intent with this project is to add the additional buildings to essentially complete the original large-scale development, except for meeting commercial design standards as they are in Springdale today. So that's why, that's why we're doing large-scale development twice on this project. The use of the facility is going to stay the same, the access is going to stay the same. Basically, the, the buildings are, are going to be improved, the site's going to be improved. Detention's going to be added for stormwater runoff. There is a variance request for, from commercial design standards on some of the building elevations on the interior of the site that are not visible, uh, from, from folks outside the property looking in. That would be that all of those structures would not have bricked exterior on the interior-facing elevations. Everything on that exterior is going to be the split block, solid block. If you've seen the color elevations, you kind of know what that is portrayed to be like. The, uh, the lighting is all going to be internal. It's, there's not going to be any lighting on the exterior of the buildings, and so, you know, it's going to be a significant upgrade to, to what's there now. Almost all of the buildings that are going to be added for storage are going to have climate-controlled storage. The storage units that are going to be on the interior of some of these buildings will have access from the outside. Those won't be climate-controlled storage. The other variance item is for the fencing. The ordinance calls for a continuous run of fence, or it calls for a non-continuous run of fence. We would like to do that on areas that don't have the brick pillars in place now, except for the south side of the property adjacent to the veterinary clinic. The adjacent landowner there has expressed a desire to have a different type of fence and possibly some additional landscaping done in that area. The developer has been in communication with them on this, and we are in agreement to do some additional improvements on that area. That's something that's being negotiated right now, so we do anticipate doing that. As we understand it, they will be coming forward with a, a project at some point in the next couple of months, and so their project will, of course, be something that you, that you see, and this common boundary is something that we intend to work with them on as far as the landscaping and the fence is concerned. So I guess with that, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to try and answer that for you.
Staff comments?
Currently, you are, there are stories of vehicles and stuff outside. Are you eliminating that because you don't have any place on here for those to be stored?
Uh, yes, that's correct. That is, vehicle storage is not going to be there. This is all, uh, that's something that's going to be done away with, yes. As these buildings are placed, there's not going to be any space for that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the existing buildings that face to the, to the property on the south, will they have brick put on around those, or are you only doing it to the prop, to the outside edges on the north side?
It's on the, the north and the south side, and the front as well.
Of only the new buildings or the existing buildings do?
Oh, yeah. We're not going, we're not proposing to go in and redo the architecture on the existing buildings.
You're not adding any, any-
That's right.
-bricks aside to the existing buildings.
But, but there will be a screening fence, so, you know, all of that will be, will be screened. And, and that particular area that you're referencing on the south side is the area that we're working with the adjacent landowners on for the improvements to that fence and the landscaping in that vicinity.
And I believe this plan that you're seeing on the screen is a little bit different than what was put in your packet, because there's been some work done with engineering and planning staff since this went out that's made some modifications, a little bit different in the building locations?
Um, well, it looks like it's current to me, the, there has been quite a bit of work since the material submittal deadline. We did go through several iterations on drainage to make sure that we met all of the drainage requirements here. There was some concern about runoff going to the south from this property, and we made sure that we did put the downspouts into a downspout drainage system that will issue the runoff to the detention pond that's going to be on the west end of the site. So all of the runoff that is being created with this project is going to be issued to that detention basin. There currently is not a detention basin on this site. It is a sheet flow release, it's a direct release. This is something that's going to change those characteristics, detain the peak runoff rate. It's, it's going to be a, a big improvement to what's happening. If there's any negative impact for that today, this is going to mitigate those, those types of releases.
I think it was the detention pond that's different. On the one that I saw in our packet, it was directly behind those two buildings, and it looks like we pushed it up in the corner.
Yeah, it, it has changed as far as that's concerned, the detention location. Okay. Uh, other comments, the, all comments from utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. The developments comply with the city's Springdale commercial design standards or variances required. A five-foot wide sidewalk along the full length of the building along any side that features a common entrance is required. The sidewalk should be set back from the building foundation at least six feet to provide areas for foundational landscaping. Foundation landscaping is required. Building facade shall include a repeating pattern with no less than three of the following: color change, texture change, material module change, expressions of architecture or structural base through a change, implying no less than 12 inches in width, such as the, such as an offset reveal or projecting rib. At least one element must repeat horizontally, and one element shall repeat at intervals of greater than 30 feet horizontally or vertically. Predominant exterior building materials shall be high-quality materials, including without limitation the following: brick, native natural stone, synthetic stone, concrete masonry units, smooth face units with integral color, synthetic stucco or ephist, architectural precast concrete, decorative face, concrete tilt-up panels, glass or wood, natural or composite. Predominant exterior building materials shall not be smooth face, concrete block tilt-up concrete panels or prefabricated steel panels. Need detailed drawings of enclosures and screening methods. When a commercial development includes a fence or wall, the following guidelines and standards shall apply. The maximum height of the fence or wall shall be eight feet. Constructive high-quality materials such as decorative blocks, brick, stone, cypress, cedar, redwood, or, and/or wrought iron. Maximum length of a continuous unbroken and uninterrupted fence or wall shall be 50 feet. Brakes shall be provided through the use of columns, landscaping pockets, transparent sections, and/or a change to different materials. You need to obtain an HCD permit for all work done on their right-of-way, submit a copy to city staff. The concept of detention must be approved by the planning commission. In section 107, the side area of disturbance is greater than one acre. Approval of the stormwater pollution prevention plan, proof of submittal and approval of a grading permit by the stormwater program coordinator must be submitted to the planning office prior to approval of construction plans. Before a grading permit or SWIP can be approved, a desk control pin must be included in the SWIP, and you can get applications and forms online. Okay. Okay, so your design standards, are you putting a five-foot sidewalk along the full width of the building along any street that has a customer entrance? You're only cus, along this big building on the east side, will it have landscaping along it, and does it have a sidewalk along it?
There's some existing landscaping at the existing office. My understanding is that, you know, there is going to be some improvements made with that. That's not shown on this plan. The sidewalk that's shown here provides access to the office from the existing sidewalk along the highway right-of-way. So, um, we, that is where the, the sidewalk connection is being made to the patio and common area of that office building. There's also going to be a, a, I guess there were two items that we needed to add for the special items for the commercial design standards. One of them that was chosen was a bicycle rack, and the other was a water feature for a, kind of a common watering area for the public to have access to in that vicinity. So we've kind of tied all that together over there on the, the north side of the existing office building right now.
Okay, so you're not asking for a variance for that five-foot connecting sidewalk to the, I mean, the connection to that, but there won't be a sidewalk in, along the front of that building?
Um, no, and really, I don't see how we, we would be able to add that and make it u, useful. We're putting the sidewalk from the highway to the building. If we need to reconfigure that, we certainly can do that.
Okay, what, what are you doing to the existing structure? Is it going to stay just like it is? It's going to have any improvements to the exterior?
Um, well, I think we're going to haul off the old sign and, you know, for one thing, get rid of some of the, the stuff, the refuse that's around there right now. I don't know of what improvements they're going to make right now.
have access until you go through the, to the fence?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Then, you submitted your elevations, and that's what you want the buildings to look like, and that's what the materials you want as presented. That's what you're asking for your variance to include. And then, you said there were some changes to the screening methods and the enclosures. On the north side, it is a screening fence with block pillars in between?
Well, there's a portion of the front and the north and the south side that has brick pillars with wrought iron fence there, okay? We don't want to get rid of that stuff. We want to keep that.
Okay. And do you want to extend it beyond where it is now?
Yes. We are wanting to extend the fence around the perimeter of the site. The fence that we're wanting to add, that we need the variance for, is on the north and on the west side of the property, okay?
And what kind of fence are you proposing?
That fence is, essentially, it's a privacy fence, a wooden privacy fence, okay? The variance is so that we don't have to continue with the brick pillars or something similar to that every 50 feet. Now, the south side, of course, is going to get something totally different that meets with the approval for the, between the developer and the landowners to the south, so, but the variance is for that.
So, you don't have any of that worked out? So, right now, you would be meeting the design standard requirements of a pillar or a break every 50 feet on the side on the south, really only asking for the variance for the property fence along the north and the west? What is adjacent to this property on the north?
It's a residential, agricultural zone. There's a residential property there.
Okay.
Residential use on agricultural zone property.
Okay. I think that's all I had. Unless I come up with something as we talk. I think that's it.
And so, the two, you had two variances on here. The one is for the fence that we just described, and the one is the use of materials on the interior not being the block or brick.
That's right, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure I have those correct. Any comments from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission.
Do those have to be taken together?
I'm sorry?
Do those have to be taken together the way they're submitted? The fence versus the, because I, I mean, I think we worked really hard on our fence standards in being residential basins.
Well, he's asking for a variance of the modification of the commercial design standards, and those are things that he's asking for. If you want to take them separately, you can.
Yes, sir.
I'm Zed Johnson. I'm an architect. I represent the veterinary clinic next door. We have a common boundary of about 800 feet. And so, we've been fortunately in conversation with the applicant about that fence, and we're going to be coming before you for a large-scale development at some time in the future. For some reason, we can't make it work budget-wise. We'd still want to have the city standard fence with the breaks. But our intention is to upgrade that fence where it's close to where our existing, or our new building's going to be, because we're going to be back some 400 feet off of the front. So, we appreciate the fact that they're, we're in a really narrow side. I've met with Patsy in the past, and, you know, we've got 102 feet by 800-foot-long site, so that's, you know, tremendous challenge. So, one of the things in addition to the us being able to negotiate where we upgrade the fence and so forth is there also, there's a portion there where they have some, about 15 feet, not of all which we would have, but this grass right now with some pin oak trees on it, and they've agreed that we could push the fence a few feet, say five or six feet toward them, so we could have some landscaping on our side to help buffer. Because, you know, it's been, we're pleased, I guess you'd say, that we're going to get rid of the ratty-looking privacy fence that's there now. You know, it's falling apart. So, anything where you've got a neighbor that you can work with to make a common improvement is a plus for us. So, we would, we don't mind, you know, if we can't see unfinished building facades, you know, or ones that are just metal in the interior and you can't see it, doesn't matter to us. We're really concerned about making a nice project on our side that's, you know, that isn't detracted by the neighbor. So, I think things are positive from our perspective.
And that's on the south side, right?
Yes, we're on the south side.
If you work out a relationship where the fence is moved off of the property line, you'll need an easement document that shows that that can happen.
Okay.
Because we, sometime in the future, it may not all of us remember what we agreed to when that happens, and we need some document that makes the balance.
All right, you know, I copied you the, you know, the chain of emails so far, and if you guys will put that in the record for this, we'll certainly, as we come for you on the next thing, we're glad, happy to do that.
We have all of those down. We have all, we have all that record down, so we know what the discussion is going to be.
Great, great. That's what we're looking for.
But right now, they're not asking for any variance to the fence on your side.
That's right.
If nothing else, it will be the breaks every 50 feet all the way down through there if nothing else happens.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
And once again, I feel like person to the north deserves the same fencing as the person to the south.
Do you want to take a call for the vote on the fencing requirement separately?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm with you. I mean, that's a, it's a long area as far as not having any breaks in it, and, I mean, we know.
We don't know what's going to happen to that other side and...
Well, and over the years, fences like that without having those breaks, I mean, they're going to break down pretty fast on that, so.
Okay, so, you understand that we're, they're going to separate the two out. There will be the commercial design standards for the predominant material and that kind of stuff, and a separate one for the fencing on the north side and the west, okay? Okay. Make sure everybody knows what we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay, and so, Ms. Haney, you're calling for the vote on that variance on the...
Are we doing that one first? Call for the vote on the fence.
Okay.
Got it? So, you are separating these out as far as two different variances, okay?
Panado?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
No.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No. Variance for the fence does not pass seven to one.
Okay, now, the remainder, well, and we got a concept of detention too.
Well, we still have the call for the vote for the variance for the interior.
Call for the vote on the interior.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Variance for designs, commercial design standards for interior passes eight zero.
And then, we need a concept of detention.
Is that a motion?
Call for a vote.
A call for the vote on the concept of detention.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney on concept of detention.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Concept of detention passes seven zero, and then, we have large scales, it's going to be a motion.
Motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight zero. Thank you.
Okay, variances to the, I mean, appeals to the variance, you now have to go through the court system.
Thank you. All right, the other two large scales were tabled per staff. This was L dash 23, 17 dash 23 Gray Bar Electric, and L 17 dash 24 Watlow Soong Thang Dharma, if I pronounced that correctly. And let's see, the next section, Board of Adjustments, B 17 dash 43 Rand and Megan Seeger, 4075 Baltic Street, variance for reduction of front setback, corner lots from 30 feet to 20 feet, presented by Rand and Megan, or Megan Seeger.
I'm Megan Seegers. We live at 4075 Baltic. As you can see, the lot, the front faces Baltic and the back butts up to South Miller. The way that our house was constructed, a corner of our back patio that's existing lies within the building's setback, so we're not able to cover the patio currently. We're requesting for it to be moved back 10 feet to allow for the overhang and for us to cover it and extend it two feet to the side so that it's a 12 by 10.
Okay. Staff comments?
Okay, I'm confused. You're going to have, you're going to have to, I've got to find my paperwork first. Okay. The patio is on the...
Faces South Miller. It's on the backside of the house.
Okay. Right in that location there?
Yes.
So, and do you have a fence back there?
We do. It's privacy fenced all the way around.
Okay, and are there any utilities or anything back there that your patio would be encroaching upon?
No, the utility easement is at 20 feet, so we're requesting for the building setback to also be at 20 feet, so everything's even.
Okay.
That it?
That's it, yeah.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission. It's a call for the vote.
You know, I, just the comment that I have is that when we add that to the back, then visually, that street, it changes the look of the street. And I wonder if they can't do partial depending on the way.
Actually, our property is one of the only properties that don't have a covered porch just the way that it's angled. It, that is the narrowest part of our yard, but all the way down the street, all of those other properties have covered porches that are included on.
But it's because of the way the builder chose to build. So, you could put a table with a umbrella.
We could.
Or, I mean, there's other options.
We could.
Plus, it faces east, because what it asks us to do is to change, change what our easement is, and then, everybody would have the right to do that. So, there's got, to me, there has to be a reason that extends beyond the way the builder placed the house, or the way he chose to build a house perhaps too big for the lot or positioned in a position that, and as much as I understand, it's not what you'd like to do, but that was how you bought the house, so.
No, I agree, but that's, that's the lot we chose. The house was already planned that way. We had no choice on making any changes. You can see I have two boys, and I have another baby on the way. An umbrella really doesn't suffice for providing the amount of shade that we would like to have. Also, it faces the east, the sun does shine on that part of the yard pretty much all day. We don't really get any relief until about 5 o'clock when it reaches the other side of the house.
That's my comment.
Okay.
I'll call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Question first. Oh, okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Adjustment passes seven one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. There were three waivers, 17 dash 11 Charles Thomas, that's tabled per staff, 17 dash 13 was already heard, 17 dash 14 withdrawn, not needed for Mark's Construction, and then, W 17 dash 15 tabled per staff. Next section, preliminary plats, replats, and final plats, 17, final plat 17 dash 02 is to be final plat for Tuscany subdivision phase three, north side of Harbor Avenue and south of Gibbs Road, presented by ESI.
Kevin? Just to be accurate, I thought I heard two. No votes on 1743? Were there not?
I only had one.
I had one.
I just gave it to...
Okay.
It was just one.
Okay, thank, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't have mattered because...
Wouldn't have mattered anyways, pass. I just, to be accurate.
Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. We're wrapping up construction, wanting to close out the Tuscany Phase Three project. I'll answer any questions.
Okay, you're 80% complete on water and sewer?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent on water and sewer? And where are you on?
All the curb and gutters down. We do have some box tops remaining, but we're going to be paved out in approximately two weeks.
Okay, so you're not trying to take this to council next Tuesday night?
Correct. It'll be the following.
Okay, you're trying to get to the council meeting on the 22nd?
Yes.
Okay. Location and sizes of all utilities, including the storm sewer, has to be included. Need the benchmark data. Note the total linear feet of the street being dedicated. All comments from utility companies and other city departments must be addressed. All items on the attached list must be satisfied prior to obtaining the planning director's signature on the final plat. With the hammerhead turnaround located outside the right-of-way, the property owner will be responsible for maintenance of the turnaround. And have you addressed that on that lot? And that it can't be blocked?
Can't be what? I'm sorry. Can't be blocked, is that what you said?
Yeah. Dwayne? Dwayne over there?
Yeah, here's him.
Is there an issue with the fire department of that hammerhead being on private property at those locations and somebody parking in those locations?
Yeah, that was the agreement, that they was going to mark them up with signs and stuff at the end of those. The way I understood it when we talked about this the first time, it didn't violate any city ordinances or any of the planning requirements, but it's still a hammerhead that's required for a turnaround. And that was the thing about the way they used it with driveways. I think we all, it was under their standing that we would have signage up that says you can't park in those areas.
Okay. I think it needs to be noted on the plat too, so that when someone purchases each one of those lots, they are made aware that that's a restriction to it, otherwise, the hammerhead doesn't work.
Sure.
Okay?
Agree.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? It's to the commission. And this was an addition, that this was not in our original packet on here, so.
Right. It was on your last month's agenda. We tabled it because they weren't far enough along with the improvements.
Is that a motion to approve?
This has to be a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Subject to staff comments, yes.
Okay. So, do they have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Final plat passes eight zero.
And the ordinance needs to be in our office the Wednesday before the council meeting agenda that you wanted on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to go back to, there was a tabled item, B 17 dash 40 Rafael Hernandez, 3118 Mueller, variance for, to increase, variance to increase heights of wrought iron fence in fronts, presented by Rafael Hernandez.
I don't know. I guess I don't know what I'm here for.
That's been tabled for tonight. That's been tabled for tonight. So, they're not going to hear that. Yeah, they'll reschedule it, and you'll get another notification when it's, it was one of the table items.
Okay, you won't get another notification on that? It automatically goes to the first Tuesday meeting in next month? You won't get another notification?
So, the first Tuesday of next month?
Of next month, yes.
Yep. So, we've called for this one, two meetings in a row.
Right, so it'll have to be resubmitted if we want to move forward with it, because
So, we've, um, called for this one, two meetings in a row.
Right, so it'll have to be resubmitted if we want to, uh, move forward with it, cause it'll have to be re-notified and all that kinda stuff.
Okay.
Okay?
Director's report?
Work session on the fifteenth, that would be our normal work session night, I know that's the second day of school, I don't know if that creates a problem.
Okay.
Uh, do we want to look at the possibility of a tour of Children's Hospital that night?
I'd love to, I won't be in town, but I'd love to have done it, but I won't be here.
Okay, is, is there enough people here? I, it being the second night of school, I'm kinda, I wanna make sure that we know before I call them and see if we can get a tour of that, may, probably meet at five-thirty out there at the, at the location, when you pull in the driveway, the, I mean, the, off the street in that first driveway, there's a Mission mobile home or trailer there, that's where we will meet there and unless you hear differently from me, I talked to Kim the other day, so we'll schedule that at five o'clock.
Fifteen?
On the fifteenth.
Five or five-thirty?
Uh, five-thirty, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Then if we want to, we can come back here and work on the stuff for the northwest quadrant again. Uh, Erin is working on some information about what's out there now, what, what we can, just some, some good information on what that whole area has to offer and what's out there now, so we can start looking at what we think needs to happen with that whole area.
So that's to talk about the areas as a whole or certain sections on it? Cause I think you were, okay?
Yes and yes, you know, when we look at all that areas, are there some areas we wanna look at, it just sections, we're gonna look at that whole area together, how does it tie in with the other side of forty-nine, all that kinda stuff? And so Erin's gonna be working on some information so we can have some statistics to start looking at, at that whole area.
Mayor, do you know, uh, for City Future, um, if, if the agenda is set, I don't know if Perry?
Uh, I would, I doubt that it's set.
Okay.
I just say that from experience.
Okay, cause I was gonna reach out to him of potentially, is this something that we can kinda look at as far as the northwest corridor of, of Springdale and, and maybe even the east side and how do we plan those out a little bit better?
It could probably be added or it could be, it may be a part of a discussion that's